Well, we're here with this.
Be nice and loud.
All right.
We're on.
You have a motion to open the meeting?
I make a motion to open the meeting. Thanks Laura.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Let's go lead it.
You said sweet wow.
Yeah, you're loud.
I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Go Glenn.
Go Glenn.
Alpha Dog Rod, yes sir. Is there anything on Alpha Dog or?
I don't like my.
I got a call from earlier and I didn't have a chance to return it. It sounded like they were planning on coming in but. I'm trying to call them right now.
Cause they already moved their dogs over.
Yeah, there's no dog.
Oh, I know. Yeah, it was something about they cleaned out their other place. And they're making their last trip right now and they weren't sure what waivers to ask for.
Oh, they're probably not ready.
Oh, there's Martell, Martell.
You're up.
All right, you're up. You're the only one.
What, sign us?
Yeah, sign in.
We're gonna wait for you.
Jen, did you? Did you bring copies of the application?
Just one. I wasn't sure if my digital had it all.
Okay, I can, I'll do some right now.
Sorry about that. What else was the talk? He said that another product I talked to him about. This is. This is just not related to that. I blew it up so it was easier to explain.
Okay, you want one of these, Rob?
Yeah, I got the eyes.
My eyes.
I think it was died if you were going through site, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I filled this out the best I could. Way within, talk about.
All right, we need to know when we're gonna do the west.
Then I show it up, right?
Well, then, we've got the answer for the trick, trick, trick of subdivision.
Right.
No subdivision. Site line review.
Yes.
Yes.
And then they can figure out what they want.
Cause I sent a digital copy of everything. A lot of that seems like subdivision oriented, yeah.
Our checklist we gotta improve.
There's a lot on that. Which I was like, I just feel like following after stuff or not.
We'll go through it as we.
Okay, and then the, uh, the butter is I, I probably. The names on that ones online. It's not made of like map or number, so it's like. The names on that, I think, aren't accurate anymore. I think that's. At least I looked it up under Rossy.
So this is your lobby?
Yeah, both, yeah.
That's one just sold?
No, that, they split them in half the same year.
Oh, okay.
So we bought, she had almost twenty acres and split and so on.
Okay.
It is, but. I'll take a copy of it. Thank you.
You get it.
Don't cut the names.
Oh, that's bad, see?
I was, I was just saying I can find those names cause they're not medical order. Not by map or lot number, so it's like.
Yes, I gotta guess.
I guess, oh yeah.
Oh, yeah, yes, if you do it online, yes.
So you had, you had a driveway permit, your driveway, right?
Yeah, that's all set with the road, yeah. Parking lot was all done years ago, it was light.
Yeah.
And Jim's.
And you said you brought, you built this driveway wide and?
Yeah, since I figured eighteen line, I'm four and something wrong.
My biggest question was with that, so. If it's gonna be a road, he's gonna bump it out a little bit, right?
Is that one of the way we're talking about?
Yeah, cause I think, I mean, we're not going subdivision.
Well, that.
So I mean, I, I think.
If it's split later.
Right.
Oh, okay, yes.
Conclusions, right, if this ever gets subdivided. It's gotta go to subdivision.
Yeah, answer to subdivision four, correct.
Right.
Go back to the.
And we'll note that this driveway has to be brought to town soon.
Sure does, yeah.
Cause I mean, you put it there with no inspection or anything, so I think.
Yeah, I mean, it's a nice wide driveway, but for down spec, it's just not quite there.
Okay.
So if we leave it and call it a driveway and it can't, it need to be brought up to down specs, that covers all of us. It can't be, can't be used in subdivision.
Makes total sense, yeah, yeah. It's not true, yeah.
A little.
You're a little breathing on this. Look, it's so wonderful.
I think we called this our workshop, we can accept the, um, we think the applications can be.
Did you see Skip today?
No, Skip?
Mr. Webb?
No.
No?
No, I was not there today.
Oh, okay.
I'll be up there all day tomorrow, but we're setting trust us up.
Alright.
For the craze around here.
So I think he said that he was going out today, but I believe, I believe in that email statement, he did wanna meet him off.
That's fine, yeah, yeah, I just, yeah, and, um. Yeah, parking lot thing, yeah, let him figure out where he wants, I guess.
Okay, yeah.
Let him be now, we'll go from there.
So you'll, he's gonna be coming with us today or, I mean, tomorrow or Wednesday, so after he comes in, I'll touch with you.
Yeah, that would only be, yeah. That was one of the reasons, cause I'm trying to get the fire department to get me my lockbox. They had put a lockbox up there for the fire, for the haunt. Six years, I've never got a lock. I've called them three times, like, yeah, I sent so up. One day they broke our, they turned around and ripped the rope off.
Oh.
Oh, the one where they upset him, I went, dude, don't worry about it. But do you can't just lock that lockbox? Yeah, I guess someone was turning around and hooked on it with a walker.
You haven't built an permit for your parents?
Not yet, not, not until they get approved, that's, that's how I make sure before we do the septic and that. So as soon as we're okay to move on, I'll, we'll get the septic out there. Put the exact location and the plan for that, then I'll do the permit.
So is, is this a building here, way down here?
Yeah, it's my brother's house.
So that's already there?
He's building that out, he's built halfway through.
Okay.
And because I did one and then we're gonna ask for one more, so. Yeah, we're here.
Okay, so this one. So that's permitted, right?
Yep.
Easy to be coming up on a removal here, too.
I'm gonna catch up to him pretty soon, what are you talking about? He's actually, uh, he reached out to.
Well, you're, we're not in season now, so.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I know. Uh, did we jump in today? For, uh, installation? He's ready, so.
Yeah, these two here.
He's, yeah, so this isn't there.
No, this one's in the mail, too.
Yeah, they've all started.
Mike, Mike's.
So this isn't a building, right?
Mike's in Jim, no, that's the home area.
So we have, we do have a building there that was permitted, you, uh, six years ago.
So there is a building in the haunt place?
Yeah. That's the, the footprint of the walk and all that stuff. Just to give you an idea.
Your house is sad, right?
Yeah. Yeah, put roof on the wall, that's sad, yeah.
How long does it take you to go through the walk?
About twenty-five minutes, huh? Yeah. Just keep that a little more past, and keep my bed up a little more. Someone take the thirty-eight people buying, so. I'm stressed out, we're not, you know, trying to not bring doors, but.
Guess I'm building houses, right?
Well, that's the problem, man. The weather's going, yeah, it's nice, although it's hot.
Mel, if you're watching, you probably should just come now. She probably can't hear you. Mel! If you're watching, you should probably come now.
I'm just calling her quick, Mel, Alpha Dog.
Jen, can I get a copy of the? The, uh, proposed stuff on the map? I redid it and I did put the entrance in the park box.
This?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I did, so I, that's why I was like, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm dope.
Oh, no, no, but I did write entrance and exit where the service, and then the pedestrian exit entrance too on the, on the one I bought it.
On the one that was, I think that is.
Yeah, really?
Yes, yes.
I should have been the nine point four one.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll say that for you.
Yeah.
Now, for conversation's sake, the driveway. They don't have to be a certain, uh, distance away from the sidelines?
If it's ten, it's okay, yeah.
So we'll have to make sure too, that, that other side is divided, right?
Yeah.
If you turn that one into one.
Okay.
Which one?
If we have, if you ever broke this one off, right, and this had determined to essentially roll back, right?
Now you don't, now you don't, now you don't have to heat on the house.
Yeah.
Maybe just something.
We don't have, sorry, say again.
No, it's not, I'm gonna upload it afterwards. Oh, that's right.
Oh, okay, so maybe we go fifty-five or fifty-six.
Yeah, cause it looks like you're already screwed the line, yeah.
Yeah, I think we have ten.
Right.
So he, Danny, right, so if you made this twenty-four, you're gonna have to gain six on that side.
Okay.
Us ditches, so I mean, you may, you may wanna push that even a little more if you ever thought.
So if we bring it through code, it'll be twenty-four.
Twenty-four, unless you probably need to use a ditch line.
Yeah.
So.
Just for future, right?
No, no, that's, that's fine, yeah.
And it, and this house is on the end, so that won't be.
Right, yeah, I mean, so I'm gonna drop that down, so we will move that in, well.
Can you say that again?
Because I wanna make sure it's all set down, we're not gonna sell.
This right here, if this ever gets broken off.
Yeah.
But you live in a ten, the future, right? Yeah, but you're not gonna, you're not gonna have enough.
Retire.
Oh, yeah, so you're gonna.
Jesus, we're for.
How good is this, my friend?
Thank you.
So you probably wanna leave it all one street to voice mail.
So A, they have no service, cause they're closed or?
We're gonna need fifty out of twenty-four, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, so I'll re-measure the road, make sure it's eighteen and all that. To verify all that.
Promotion?
We can push it.
I know.
Would I miss something on the road?
Yeah, promote, you wanna promote? I'm gonna, I'm gonna think about what I've done.
Did I miss something on the road?
Where is, Danny, count up, if he's, he's closing, he's gonna spend feet off the left sideline. So if you ever brought it up to standard, you need enough to get out to twenty-four on the right.
If it becomes a room.
Push that house back a little right, so you get your fifty feet.
Let's go sixty.
Question mark, I'll go with that, okay?
Ken, just for my sake, that septic inside that fifty foot is fine, cause it's setback from the house, correct? From the road? Fifty foot setback from the road to the house, house only, not septic, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. I put it there, I just wanted to double check.
So what about the other side too, would that have a same issue?
Well, that would, Jim's would be that part of that lot, so it'll still be ten feet, right?
Yeah, if you told them it's one piece.
Yeah.
Or you never.
What if we cut it?
If you cut it, have it actually broke it off, put it on a house.
Right.
Could be.
Yeah, I think we could, yeah.
Then we'd never bring it up to it, just lose that road.
Right.
Cause you wouldn't have, well, cause here you only have forty feet.
Well, that's where the ten foot buffer.
Right, so you would have to, I'm just.
Yeah.
If that, if your house was split off, his house was split off, at any time, he would have, yeah. Talking to myself. What do you have, Rob?
Me too. Only when I listen sometimes.
Pretty tough, yeah.
Application, okay.
Yeah, no, I have a problem with that. They've set up, they've set up. The map, you know? Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He's gonna sign on minor or major.
The driveway's already in, right?
Yeah, it's already there. I was thinking minor. I think it comes up the topic if we're looking at the whole, right? We should look at the haunt area too, cause it's, it's what we've done in the past, right? When somebody has changed or brought it to us, right? Not saying we're gonna have anything, but whether we see something at the entrance or the exit or.
So should we do a sidewalk?
Probably just something with your consistency.
Consistency, that's your word.
It definitely seems like a minor, probably say that.
Yeah, I mean, other than that, I mean, actually, no really issues. Other than I hope we just start up tonight with a knock needed.
No, I think it's more facts and findings, insurance, somebody said that if any of these are sold, they're asking to do subdivision.
Well, wouldn't, I think, what's gonna happen too is this.
Title search.
Jet title search, you're gonna break out your whole, you're gonna be locked.
Oh, yeah, there's no way to sell, well, I mean, yeah.
You know, unless you sold it as exit one beat.
Yeah.
That was my only concern when it came up, was that, taxes, right? But we did details that are legal, right?
Yeah.
It doesn't turn something into.
And this is all previously approved, the haunt area, but I mean, we have to be back up for review. I mean, most of this seems like, oh, anyway, right, it's still. It's residential, it's not.
Yes, it's not, not a residential, right, so. But I think you do, I do build this to a sidewalk, at least I'll look at it and see the entrance, see the driveway.
We enjoy looking around town, don't we?
And I never, I, I buy them, I've never been.
No, me, I'd buy two, yeah.
I love trying to advance.
You're so good at that.
It's miles on there.
Yeah.
Right, do you wanna accept this as a minor then, this application?
So I'll, uh, I'll make a motion to accept, uh, Michael Martell's, uh, as a minor, an application has some plate, however, with a caveat that we need to be at ours.
How's that gonna?
Okay, man? Alright.
All right. Now we gotta figure out the sidewalk.
All right, so it's gonna be a drawing, what do you want me to do?
Just where we discussed, where you might have to move that house over a little bit?
Okay, yeah.
Just, pretty much that.
Just remember, okay.
Yeah, that's it.
All right.
That, that just kinda gives you some guidance to.
Yeah. All right. Okay, so I'll get a better number on that driveway, make sure it's in that way. I know it's pretty wide, so.
I don't know, you might already have it.
Oh, maybe, uh, I don't.
Well, if it's broke off and sold, if it's broke off and sold, then that turns to a right of way.
What's that?
So, so if it's broke off and sold, that then turns to a right of way.
Which has to be brought to.
That would be fifty feet.
Fifty foot wide, okay.
Closest structure from the left property edge would be a hundred feet. Fifty feet of the road, fifty feet off.
Wow, that's gonna fifty feet, not twenty-four.
No, so we're thinking only road.
The road itself, the right of way needs to be fifty. Cause you have utilities and. So the, the right of way needs to be fifty feet off the property line? No. That can run down the property. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Total length, total width. Yeah. It's fifty. Oh, then fifty off that. And then fifty off that.
Okay.
So your road may be right on that edge, but you still get another twenty-six feet. Yeah.
Okay.
So I think, so you got ten, thirty-four.
Really need sixteen off there.
My offset's much that bad.
You're ten off the property, twenty-four road.
That's thirty-four.
Twenty-six, yeah, maybe it's thirty-three.
So, so roads and right, the right of, those can go way down the edge of the property.
Yeah, you want me fifty from the property line.
From the property line, not the road.
The left property edge, you wanna be fifty feet.
Not the driveway.
Not the driveway.
All right, so we were going up the driveway.
Right, we were going ten plus twenty-four, which is thirty-four.
Yeah.
So you need a sixteen additional feet.
All right, I guess I lost this. So before we were saying we had to be fifty feet off the driveway.
You mind?
Uh, not at all.
So if this is your left property.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
Fifty foot of it is gonna be right of way.
Okay, and then it'd be fifty for that.
Fifty feet from there.
Okay, for that, okay.
For that, yeah. And then if you had to gain naturally too, if you gain on the other side. As we said, we're not right now the property one.
So just, not again, I'm not playing with this, some else has gone off on that, but. The pole that we put in.
Yeah.
That would have to be moved possibly down the road, or, cause how wide does the actual road have to be, two miles, let's say?
Twenty-four.
And then it says I do my.
Right. But the hole could be an addition, I guess.
Yeah, which it, they just cut it out, if you put it off, probably, so. Okay. Like I said.
Saving us trouble with this.
That'd be our biggest problem for.
Right. So like we said, it just happened on another, you know, that they had another potential to expand one of them.
Yeah.
And they had to come back in subdivision, they had a road issue, but they had to come back in subdivision, cause they had to sell.
Right, gotcha. Yes, yes, yeah, I told her. I'm not good at most of these. Don't think that was the next step. All right, so yeah, I'll redraw that, I'll get those numbers more accurate and less. I'll just email to Jen.
They won't need it, cause they won't do a sidewalk, they'll bring it back. Discuss it, doesn't seem like we're ready to public carry this one. I can't imagine unless we see something, right? I can't see something, but. Right, I mean, public carrying would come if it had to become a subdivision.
Correct, but it's already existing.
Right.
And then trigger up subdivision, so.
Right. So there's nothing on the commercial side, there's nothing or non-residential. There's no changes on the non-residential.
Not very touching, yeah.
Right, so.
Sounds like it's all office.
Right, so it seems like a sidewalk. And we'll go from there, but it should be pretty straightforward.
Okay.
We just gotta pick a time for the sidewalk, right?
Yeah. We got two coming up next week.
Right, I can't make Wednesday, so you guys can believe you want it. I realized. After the fact.
What were they again?
The twenty-fifth and twenty-seventh.
Yeah, what, what were they?
He threw a rug.
Well, you know.
Oh, oh, that's right.
We had learned twice, because we don't think we can get it down one.
Yeah. I didn't realize, I had something on Wednesday. I can do the Friday.
I think we oughta do the Fri- honestly, I think we oughta do the Friday. I'd really like to have you there to keep rolling it.
So we got the Wednesday?
Yeah, cause I really am.
No, I know.
Yeah.
We can yell.
I can. Well, I mean, we can.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Well, not kidding, I, I, I don't mean that you can't handle what I just.
Who'd you try to say what?
I, I, I think I'm gonna stop talking, but I agree with you, I, I think he needs to be there too.
So you do this one in its place on the twenty-fifth, if you want, I don't think that you want this one.
No, we think of that.
That's why, since you're already scheduled, some of that.
That's a good idea. I'll try and go six.
Pete or six?
That's PM, right?
So we'll change it.
I tried four AM, but they were, they were.
Twenty-fifth, that's six.
And where are we going to haunt place, right?
Yeah, just go one thirty-nine and I'll fix it in the box on it. Or if you wanna drive the next way, we know you can fit it. And I'll stake out just the house, so you just wanna.
Yes.
Yeah, it's all, yeah. Cause everything else is already going.
Yeah, yeah. So I think we're gonna, Dennis, give you a little bit back.
Just that number, so.
Yeah. Maybe we'll do the twenty-seventh, then.
Absolutely, yeah, certainly, bro. I want, I want so.
Also trying to do it all at once, yes, gonna try.
Pride, just make it easy.
The thing that got between me and my brother, which I don't, after so many years of working every day together. I just want it right now, you just want it, like, get the other one close.
Get the line from it.
That's what I try to do, get inside, try and heat throw it on one day and see if we.
We'll try it on Friday.
As much as we can.
Yeah.
Do as much as we can, and if we can't, then we'll just have to.
Yeah, cause our next meeting is.
The seventh, the seventh.
Yeah, so I think if we just do Mike on the twenty-sixth or, uh, twenty-fifth or hard, it'll do heat throw it on the twenty-seventh, which should really land.
Yeah.
And then after this sidewalk, I can go.
When you're updated, when?
Yeah, when? Cause you skipped, not everyone.
Uh, so it'll be on the seventh.
Seven, October seventh.
You'll be, you're already gonna be on it then.
Yeah, I see. That's a ways out, I can do a week. In my head. All right, you, uh, that's over me? Yeah, very good. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you, appreciate it.
See you all.
Have a good night. I know, I'm sitting there going, man, you might wanna come.
There's no video.
Yeah, we forgot, we forgot about that. We forgot that.
Like Johnny calls, he's like, yeah, so I'm driving around, I'm thinking, and then Rocky called, I'm like, dude, I gotta go.
He just pulled in.
I mean, Rocky calls, I like, I gotta go, Johnny, honey, man.
Oh, that's right, this is recorded, isn't it?
Yes, the song line. Yeah. After we get here.
Joseph Lord is very.
He's a dear.
Average Joe, married, good parents.
I'm taking them off the next agenda too.
Simplified energy pool, which is down on.
Have they come up? Have they sent the point in?
Yeah, the upper branch. And then the lower branch.
I post office.
Post office.
Oh, yeah.
Make sure you drive by the wood, see if it looks like, took a couple trees or something. I thought it looked more like a box.
Blue Rose, we just said again.
Blue Rose is back.
Yeah.
Back again.
Hurry up, the package will leave you alone.
No, we put it on hold. Johnny boy.
Johnny boy. This is the sound from my tent, this is my tent.
Alright, that's.
Yep.
Yours, yeah.
Is this updated or is it the one you submitted back in?
It's kinda sorta like we had, we had an appointment, so we had to delete a couple. Turn a couple walls down and.
Uh-uh.
Nothing really, too. The building permit will probably have.
That was Jen's or.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one was the largest, and I just made some other smalls.
You gotta have the small one.
Need another big one?
I'm sorry, that's okay.
Need another big.
Jen made one.
I'll take one. I never say no.
I just give a wheelbarrow the truck.
You know, I'm learning that program. See if I can set the garage up to see how the one looks like regular.
Do the small crack or a big wheelbarrow?
You think quite large, yeah?
Yeah, that's your little town ride, that's the best I could with your fridge on top. There's your shelf.
Yeah.
Here's your chair, your table.
Yeah.
I put a recycling bin.
Yeah. And these are all the tools.
A little trash can, yeah, weed whacker, yeah.
Yeah, we need this all.
What's that?
I had just taken a class on Friday through this program. So I was like, alright, I'm gonna.
Will she help I hang it up our wall?
I might use this tool later.
I just.
Yeah, I gotta make one.
No, I did.
You get a, uh, do something, try to run this one too.
Well, I get two.
I can do two. Yeah, you're gonna be better than her. I know we, we asked a question about this.
Okay.
Didn't we ask Southern Maine a question about this, it was a while ago, right?
Um, it wasn't.
It's in August, I guess.
Yeah, this has been off the agenda for a couple months. What's your thoughts, Angela?
They're, they're.
For your.
Few months.
You're gonna say papers were submitted, uh, May twentieth, right?
Yeah, I think, I don't know. Um, I think. But the question was, would he. Change to the subdivision, or if it would just be. Site plan.
I think it'd be back to site plan, right?
Yeah, because it's gonna be for business.
Yeah, I was trying to think if I'm gonna make sure this was, how would we approve this if it's business only, can't return it?
Residential, yeah. Not, yeah, not to rent it anymore. Living it.
Yeah.
Or be, right. Would you not residential, but then how would you turn it into residential?
Let's just also see if they're anything.
I blow her up, I look at, look at all the. Sure, I don't know, he had a real up mind.
I wanna alter here, no. I got my.
Yeah, no, we had gotten rid of a closet and just made the hallway storage closet for all the old piles and stuff.
And then, oh, we got a file cabinet. My dear, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
That's hard for the course.
Yes, it's hard.
Current garage, does it have four foot rock protection, or is that just a slab?
Just slab, I I'd be doing the same.
Is it mono with it?
Huh?
Mono slab?
Yeah, it's for the rocks, it's just.
It has, it has the outer hunch?
Yeah.
It does.
Ain't going over it, it's gonna be easy at all.
So it's not having frost walls, you know, shows in this ground?
Are you, we're putting a frost wall on the addition, aren't we?
Yeah, we're going down, down, I talked to Roland about that and. We're going down, put, put, stay with home.
Yeah, so you're putting, you're putting frost walls on there.
Yeah, yeah.
She not gonna have the offices on, I don't have Paul Bogey anymore?
I'm moving him out, John.
Moving him out?
I'm moving him out.
You can have.
This is forty eight.
No, J C and M J will be up on twelve sixty four.
Yeah.
And then, we'll try to, if, if and when this is done, direct all the corolla stuff that way.
But he's retiring.
I know, it means I get to go over to that office and do this work before I go to my office and do mine, that's all. It's just across the driveway, yeah, it's a little easy.
I'll do that.
Exactly.
Did your dog have?
We've got one. I don't like him flying over there one day, like, all put it sideways, but.
You know?
I don't know, what are you doing? Sign over, I'm checking it.
Do you have an application for us?
I do, I black check, how about that?
What is that?
I don't know how many copies or what we're gonna do, so.
Check?
I gotta light check, so. I gotta check for everybody, the same. This is the application for this process here.
So is that ready for us with that, or?
It, it, yeah.
Yeah.
It's your make copy.
Don't forget, I got a question before, when you go look at it. You know, you're two things to come down.
Two things.
I don't wanna talk about it right now. Because when I do this garage here.
Yeah.
If you see how I got it lined out, right, on my, in my garage. I don't want all the guys to, I ripped everything up. But, but I wanna put another shed over here, strictly, strictly for my lawn mower. No, I'm just asking, you just. A lawn mower.
God, over.
They have, all the people have the key door. And care of it, and they take care of the lawn.
And the garage is just gonna be for your use and.
He's got a couple lawnmowers up there, and they know.
It's gonna be set up for my.
On the outside, and then he's got some other great things he's got up there. He wants the mowers. And how big are you thinking for the shed you were just talking about? He didn't even say.
I don't know, I'll get the help.
Well, we gotta put it on the site plan.
Well, what I told him to do.
Well, what I was hoping I could do. And put on the site plan when you go out. And I'll stake it out where I want, and then you can look at it at the same time. Not that I'm gonna do it.
Yeah. Well, I think it's one getting kaboodle. So if you get the permit, and we don't do it this year, that's okay, we can extend our permit.
Right.
I unwrapped this up.
Yeah, you want it all once.
Well, maybe, Johnny, it's good to me, maybe what you get.
But even if we get your permit and we don't finish it, we can always get a permit extension.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I can't say you're not.
Come and follow it, yeah.
You just have to write us a letter asking to extend the site plan in six months.
Yeah.
Okay.
Be honest with, I just think I'm. I want to climb on that. I'll tend to how everybody else does.
How big's the shed gonna be?
Oh, depends on how the pole goes.
How, how big, what would you be thinking for the shed though?
Ah, it, it, it wouldn't be. Well, except for me, but I'd say, I'd say, say this size, twenty by twenty four. I don't need a twenty four.
That's not a shed. Twenty by twenty four shed, you want?
So it's another building, it's more than a shed, right?
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, I guess, well, I'm thinking I could pull a, the one, the one more than you. And a garden crew all the way around, yeah.
Yeah.
And they got a key of their own, they could use it.
What, they don't know what?
Hmm, I thought that's what this was for.
Oh, yeah, that'll fit on the wall, yeah.
Yeah. Didn't we have a block?
We did, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Um.
I hate it all makes you out.
I don't know if, if this was, is this like what my.
We saw it once, we saw something.
Uh, she had to brown one up and clear it all up on me.
That is the one thing I did tell him, cause he come in the other day and had brought up the, the shed. So I said, you're gonna have to go up. Obviously, look at your boundaries, stake it out. So that at site review, it can be looked at, and then we have to go back to the garage to update the building permit and.
But I'm just thinking, if you could do that at the same time, you go up. All of those four stakes, beside the twenty.
Twenty by twenty four.
Yeah. This don't, this don't add it.
To add a twenty four.
So they were in a twenty four by twenty four shed?
Where?
This is, this is not added to the building.
No, no.
Yeah.
Yeah, so separate.
Project.
Yeah.
This is seriously.
Thank you, Ron.
This one, well, this one, this was an after the fact subdivision. Cause I say, cause there's no real turnaround in the area.
Uh, when you go down into the subdivision, yeah. Straight, straight ahead, you can go straight ahead and have a parking area, or you can turn into the garage to turn on as well. You're gonna have, like, straight down towards the pond.
Something, if we're going on with this, we probably oughta make sure this turnaround for firetruck, I think.
Oh, yeah, we already put a firetruck, you know.
They have the fire pump and the.
Yes. Dry hat.
The dry hat.
Okay. And it's funny, we're gonna turn around and.
Oh.
Okay.
I'll fire rings if you.
You know what this is, twenty four by twenty four shed you're talking about now?
The pond and, they're not.
No, no, so you walk out of the room, you want this, another twenty.
On what side are you taking it? You think on the side of my one dumpster, so you can.
Yeah.
I don't know about that.
Shit. Oh, over my pond?
Well, that sounds like me, I'm going twenty four consistent. That way I don't have to go four foot frost wall.
Uh, this is the pond, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, they can see me, I just wanna over here.
You want a shed over there?
Yeah, and my drainage, I've got all my drainage coming off, it's all the way down here.
What, there? The issue.
Are you?
Yeah. The other issue we gotta look into with that is, you know, encroaching on that fire pump, but you also got wetland out back, don't you?
I don't know if he does have wetland on that property, I think it's not, do you have wetland behind that Blue Rose duplex? I think so, but I'm not a hundred percent.
Behind the garage, it's there now, I thought I saw some out behind that.
Well, I want the garage, I ain't gonna.
We'll have a look at that route.
Is that town? That shed, that's.
That was a crazy.
At twenty four by twenty four.
Slab.
Slab, yeah.
I'm going twenty four by twenty six, cause that's the max you could go.
And it's not gonna have an upstairs, where?
Yeah, you can't have a second, you can't have a second story on a slab.
No.
Look at how water is dying. They're just crossing their teeth and tossing it on.
Which is actually the same size, and then he wants a twenty four by twenty four shed over here.
Okay, square footage you give me, how's that? As long as you look, I'm like.
But even if it fits, we're, after, if we can make it fit, right?
Cause I don't either.
Is that part of it, some middle?
Well, no.
Yeah.
No, that's a separate thing?
This isn't a, two day ago after.
But we, but we.
It's separate, all one, right?
Yeah.
So that, this application doesn't call for the.
I can, I can put to. Add it, within, within limits.
Where's your proposal?
It's not on there, but it's.
I, I don't wanna stop me from doing this.
The garage, if you have the addition on, who wants to put the.
But I just wanna clean it up and write to a pro your, my plan as well.
It'd be easier if we do it all at once, right?
No, I don't know, I won't put the building, no, I won't do it.
Right.
You do this.
Then get torn up there.
So, before I can work on any of these applications, I need you to sit down and make a stack of them like this thick right now?
Yeah. For me?
Oh, if I was down, listen, if I was down the building.
I don't know which one you got with?
Hold it together and we'll come with you.
I, I don't.
No, that was, that was.
There's one there, so we can.
I'll come back.
That was once. So we're gonna need an updated site plan, and we probably should have the application with what you want on that other side before we.
Okay. So I can update the application.
Oh, we only, we only need one because they already has, doesn't matter.
Okay, so just update the one that I submit to you.
Draw your own squares on it.
Yeah. I can try, I bring that up and.
We also wanna do the site plan and show it everything we want. Yeah.
I don't want, that's what stock in this for like, I get all my money, I'm gonna.
The additional shed, and then let's have a, let's have that plot plan showing.
Okay, yeah.
The way you want it.
Well, I'll update the building permit.
I just saw, I had a stake.
Oh, yeah.
And we looked at it, it's.
To include.
She threw it away.
Is there gonna be a crash bin or anything like that on there?
You wouldn't have, also.
What?
Crash bins, anything like that.
We have, we have no dumpsters, uh.
There is a dumpster down there, yeah.
Yeah. So that's gonna be moved offshore.
We're moving the dumpster?
So it was.
Well, I want it on the other side.
Okay, so the dumpster should be screened. We should show.
Well, we'll show when it got through, you know, then we'll ask questions, can we move it?
No, you can move it, just show us where you wanna move it.
Yeah, well, that's what I mean.
And then we'll decide if it's the right place to go, we need something to start with.
Okay.
Oh, I'll do it on the other side. Okay, I wanna get involved.
So this site plan, I'm gonna have you tomorrow, go down and take some measurements and stuff.
Yeah.
And you're gonna check for that.
Put some stakes on the ground, check the wetlands behind it.
Well, I can't do that, I gotta.
Would that be on our, um, subject thing?
Or maybe, there was a good original site plan.
Yeah.
When, this, this all started, he came to us an after the fact. But there, there was a civil consultant did a, a real site plan. So there is a real site plan to this.
Yeah.
This whole project.
The recording, recording.
Right, and they got.
I'm gonna have to go to.
And I believe it got built, right? They never went through the subdivision process, and then we backed into it.
It was quite a long.
Why that?
Just that weekend.
Yeah.
We went over there once to look at.
I, I think it was one of the next, one of the, I think it was.
The house.
Is it the dual, a house and a permit for this garage?
The house.
Okay. The house at the end of the road.
Yes, I think it was.
That, that's.
Yeah, so the.
That was the end of the.
Yeah, it was all.
Total things.
So it triggered, it triggered, they had a beautiful plan, it submitted it down, and then went anywhere.
So, why?
I don't know, nobody seemed to know at the time.
It was an oversight on people who were at office.
Right, he'd submit. He'd submitted the plans, the, the civil consultant plans, the full drawing, and then it never went anywhere. Everything I built and permitted, and then became a subdivision.
Right, cause it just is one piece.
Right. Right, and then it, then it came back.
Yeah. And it went to.
Well, I didn't, that's why I was gonna, if you told me I could do.
Yeah.
No, but then the, when the house was done, it was tagged up a third time, so there are three plot plans for that property in there.
Now, yes.
There currently are.
And there wasn't.
That's, no. I think I might have where that is something else. They built the one duplex, they built the other duplex, and then they were doing the one that's like, okay, this is a subdivision, it was beforehand.
I had Tom come up with.
Yeah, it should have been flagged for subdivision when he put in his building permit, but it's second duplex. But it was not, it was, yeah, it was an oversight.
Oh, no, why?
Yeah.
So, you got your homework.
I do, yeah, I gotta update the planning board application with the shed, I'll update the building permit, which will include the survey. I will find, um.
Find that.
Yeah, I'll email it to you.
Okay.
So then you have it.
We made a real site plan showing everything.
Okay. Um, civil consultant site plan. The other one that I had, I was working on this right here.
Alright, that's one more one.
Yeah. Lot one, lot two, well, you're technically lot one, we're lot two, we cut it to lot three. Oh, she already?
I, I.
Say it.
Uh. It's probably just a, a dish you might do, I won't do.
Just the one that shows the three properties.
I really.
Not just that one. Certainly not individual.
I, so I.
But I will.
I want this, I'm telling you, I like this place a lot.
What's that, the shed?
Yeah.
Uh, no, the, uh, the other addition that I want.
Yeah.
Uh, not an addition, just a, all it is, it's a whole, my lot, my garden.
You wouldn't have moved this any faster, you might as well just vary its plan, the shed, and then.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I didn't know that we were working on getting that right.
But what I'm thinking, I got a chance to get, if I can, can do this one.
Yeah.
If I can do this one, I'm moving the way.
Yeah, but we wanna just make sure that the whole thing is done in this process, so we don't have to come back again.
And I'll be, we're not ready tonight to come back one more time, we should be.
Oh, stop it, one more time, hey?
Well.
Who are you fooling?
One more time.
One more time.
We'll see you one more time.
What do you actually, can I get started on this?
No.
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 It's awful, Todd, I understand.
Well, well, then, why not? Well, because. Let me ask you this, if I, if I go away with this, can I, can I get started on this, and then forget the other one?
No. We really like, we really liked it, the real site plan, with all this.
Yeah.
With everything growing on.
Well, because look at this all in, you can tell.
His mind is, I'm gonna get Browning down there to dig where the foundation's gonna go.
Oh, yeah.
You know, play in the dirt, but no, we're not pouring foundations, no. We can play with dirt, but that's our extent. But we're not pretty much longer.
What about time limit?
We come back, probably the next time we're scheduled to sixty nine, right?
Yeah.
It's the seventh, not the ninth.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I'll have the plans to Rod and Jen and the board beforehand.
And the application updated.
Updated application.
Or whatever size.
More blank checks.
Yeah.
More blank.
It's checking up to the.
Yeah.
The one time it was.
Anyway.
That could go to.
Yeah. Was the check for sixty nine, I found?
Do what they want.
Yeah.
You found it?
It was in that stack of stuff.
Okay.
It said, it was with the road entrance application.
Which is also fifty dollars, so.
Yeah, pretty, pretty additional, unless you know what.
I had never run it down on that. We come back and said we had a credit, and I'm like, I don't think we do, but we'll be able to fill it out.
Which, it's still in that.
So, I can get this to be here on myself, I don't care, I don't, yeah, a couple of years, I'll, I'll, I'll.
It won't be a couple of years, I got a lot of time.
I think that, I think that was the week he sent me three different applications.
Probably, okay.
Brother Saint Brock. Same place, we can, everything here the next time. We get the application for.
Schedule, for review of all the site due.
We need a site one, and our site ones.
Okay.
All right, and then our surveys.
Can you just try to talk, because you kind of.
Yes. And we'll be here on the seventh either way, cause if the, if our plans got back on sixty nine, then we'll still be here for this.
Yep.
Good.
All righty.
Fabulous.
Love it.
Thank you so much for coming to play.
Well, you know, it's been a while, I'm taking my hair nice. I come back and she's being, cause when I get home, the girls went over, got a bunch of peaches.
Oh, they're good?
Yeah, they got like little trash pockets.
Wow.
He's got like, what, four peach trees?
I don't know, anybody go get it.
He brought me down two back, or what he done, and then he brought in another box today, and then there was another box, and I rolled one down tonight. Never even picked over, like, four other times.
You making a jam with it?
Gotta be something, I'm gonna blanch your skin and freeze them for now.
That's all different applications that you get.
You all gonna take them back and skim through them, and just bring you back what you need? Probably the most effective, bro, give me a bag.
Oh, that's in there, I want one.
Just one, this side.
They said you had a blank check, no.
Oh, no.
Okay, cash that.
Man.
Is this for?
That's for sixty nine.
For Shoreline, yeah.
This, yeah, yeah, okay. Check number thirteen oh seven, fifty dollars, for sixty nine.
Hubbard.
So, Shoreline. I'll let Mandy know, she'll see that later. That's sixty nine Hubbard Road. We'll pay the check, yeah, we'll pay the check for this next time from here, okay?
Along with eight other applications.
Along with all the other applications.
So my whole plan is, I, I own everything up there, I cleaned up that garbage at the end of the street. But, and I plan on writing that, and then I can sit back and say, this is all everything.
You don't, you already said that, though.
No.
Yes.
It's trying to tell you what I'm trying, just so I can say, I'm all gone.
So we'll read.
Right, I, I don't want that.
I know, all the rules we don't follow.
Alright, yeah.
Reach out, reach out to me when you figure out which application you actually wanna submit.
Make sure you let, you know, about that, that might go on someone around.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
No one give up five miles, though. And that was it for tonight, wasn't it?
Oh, yes.
Everyone's it too, but you can't eat it. It's not good. Twenty by twenty four shed.
Have a good night, everyone.
Bye.
Thank you, Rod. Thank you, Rod.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
It was good.
Yeah.
I didn't find anything, but I'm a fast reader, did you?
No, I don't think I got some meeting minutes, I guess.
Oh, yes.
Uh, control.
Yeah. Oh, there's someone else, yes.
Down, yeah, the one that's.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Kind of like, third paragraph down, where it says the board.
The board.
So down there, where questions regarding defined concrete washout locations. And then whether may use a singular double, double or staggered, I think it should say erosion control measures there.
Regarding concrete washout locations, or how they may use a singular double or staggered.
I think it was erosion control measures.
You left that word.
Since it's a good word.
So you're gonna want to use that one, use a.
Sounds good.
May use a single, double, or.
Staggered erosion control.
Staggered.
Erosion.
Control.
And then, then I think I said, third to the last sentence at the bottom, where. Uh, asked if the board would like the area rehab or indoor rebuild.
Oh, yeah, so it's just.
The area, yeah. And is that the night we talked about saying we wouldn't want it rebuilt? I was trying to remember, and that could have been the later meeting, remember where you was gonna build those crossings temporarily, you said you wanted it built once.
Right.
And done.
Oh, yeah, I know, we did say, we did say that, yes.
So I don't know if that was in that same discussion in order, if that was later.
You had it all this morning.
I thi- I think it was at the same time, actually.
So, you requested that be paid once the construction was done.
Right, but it was, we wouldn't want it rebuilt, we just want it rehabbed, so I think.
Okay.
Boy, so, yeah, board liked the area. So we, so we had the question, then I think we gave the answer, we just wanted rehab, and then.
In the area rehabs.
We didn't want it dug again.
Do you know that? Okay.
That's it.
Anybody else?
That's all I have.
Really? Out of all of those? Yeah. Sorry, I don't have the other ones on.
I got her, yeah. She's at here. That was that, should do it a square once. I need one to come in this way, is that what merchants roll them around?
Uh, they did something today, though, I think, they were saying that.
Well, yeah.
They totally took the, the school.
Oh, yes.
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, like, yeah.
I was here earlier, and I saw him doing it, so I said, oh, I can come all the way down through, yeah, that was.
That is.
Yeah. Yeah.
So that turned out, yeah, my bad, I'm like, oh, I guess I could have went all the way.
Oh, yeah, that's already. Yeah, that's what I thought.
Yes, yeah, that's true.
I think Paul called it the same way.
Oh, is that, really?
It's a problem, it was in the same situation, lady.
Well, they, they did years ago, when they did West London.
Yeah.
That was just almost the same, right, that's that, I mean, and then when they finally did it.
It wasn't good.
No, they had to put apron in everybody's driveway, and. My mother, I remember she couldn't help doing it, built in the house at all, and I was down there.
Are they doing the same thing they did on September, is it gonna get?
I don't know, I did a chip seal it after, I don't know.
Is that what that is?
Yeah, I haven't talked about it, I don't. Right.
Yeah, I mean, they, they rave about that stuff, but I don't, I don't see that.
That's what they said.
I thought they were used to.
And I was like, oh, yeah, they just write the fucking.
Yeah. Yeah, between the, the. Between your tower and everything else, it's, it's about. Well, we don't use that, we don't see that stuff.
Yes.
Alright, you ready?
Help you so you don't cry.
I'll make a motion to accept the planning board meeting minutes from Monday, August fifth, twenty twenty four, as written.
I'll second it.
You there?
Alright.